Yes ma'am.
Good evening. Welcome to the July 17 Stillwater City Council meeting. I call the meeting to order. And we have a very special guest tonight who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would like to call Sunny Forward. Sunny Cooper, right? Okay, Sunny, would everybody please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
That was an excellent job, but you're not done yet. Stay right there at that microphone because I have some important questions to ask you. First of all, what grade are you going to be in?
I am going to be in third grade.
And what school do you go to?
I go to Perkins Shrine Elementary School.
And your favorite subject?
Reading.
Okay, so then I have to ask you, what's your favorite book?
The Pokey Little Puppy.
I love that book, too. I think we all love that book. Yeah, see, they're all shaking their head yes back there. So we all agree on that. And let's see, you told me that you do something special, that you're kind of training for. What do you do after school?
I am going to go to bandit cheer after school.
And so you're going to be a cheerleader for...
Bandits.
For the Bandits, for football? I didn't do that. That kind of fit perfectly, though, didn't it? It really did. And councilors, does anybody have any questions for Sunny?
I would just comment on the very, very nice job you did. And worked so well with the microphone.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Yes.
And I'm going to ask what your favorite thing that you're doing this summer?
Probably swimming.
That's our favorite thing, too. And we can, yeah. There's going to be some water that we can talk about for Friday.
That's right.
July, yeah.
That's right.
So we can talk about that. Anybody else? You did an excellent job. Thank you so much, but stay right there. Who brought you here tonight?
My mom and my dad and my brother.
And could you introduce them? Turn around and point at them. And tell us their names.
Kenny and Heather.
Kenny and Heather Cooper? Okay, very good. Okay. And I forgot to tell you, you don't have to sit here through the whole meeting unless you just really want to.
You just make the room all water.
Okay, so next on the agenda is we have a few presentations. And Russell Beatty, there he is, he's going to make two presentations.
I'm Russell Beatty with Olson Associates. And I've got two different presentations, or two different awards that we won as part of the Western Road and Hall of Fame project that was recently constructed. One of them is the ACPA, American Concrete Pavement Association Award for Concrete Pavement. The second one was the American Council of Engineering Consultants. That was a national award. So there was a state award and a national award. And what I have over here today is I have a couple of different awards for both of those and a poster. And really, the interest of the ACEC award really was how the city and ODOT and OSU worked together on this project. And that was really the highlight of the award. So the whole award was worked together and worded to really emphasize how all of the entities work together. And so it was a great project to be a part of. And the awards, these were awards that were presented at Washington DC at a gala back in April. And so all of the different posters, what I've brought today is one of the posters that was at the awards assembly. Oklahoma had only three projects that was in Washington DC that was on display for all of the different states. And so it was a great project to be a part of, and especially thanks to the city and to ODOT and OSU and their working together on this project.
Teamwork is always best, isn't it? Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Brian, we have two-way traffic on 51?
Yes, sir.
Would you like a standing ovation? Because I think everybody out here would give you one.
I do want to thank you for your leadership and support for transportation. Pretty amazing, pretty, it's an honor to be here to share this and to partner with the city. And we certainly enjoy working with the city of Stillwater. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, we certainly appreciate all that you've done. Thank you so much. And we have one more presentation. Is there someone here for the Purple Heart Award? Okay. All right, well, that will take us to consent docket then. And I will ask the councilors, does anyone wish to remove or have something clarified?
Mayor, I'd like to request that the item I, the Sherar Museum Quarterly Report, be taken off.
Okay, we're going to remove item I, just on this one. Is there a motion to approve less item I?
Motion to approve the consent docket minus item I.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And the consent docket was approved with a four to zero vote. And that brings us to public comment on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing. We do have one person, Carla Granrose. And I just, when you come up here, Carla, just we would like for you to say your name and your address.
My name is Carla Granrose. My address is 802 South Stanley Street in Stillwater here. And I'm here about the rezoning that the Medical Center wants to do with the block between Gray and Stanley Street. And I provided another copy of the letter that I left with you last week and some pictures that I took yesterday to give you a better idea of what I'm talking about. And I'm just not that swift on the computer, so I can't bring it up and everything. But I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about this. And I know that you're kind of familiar with what is in my letter. And I just wanted to kind of highlight that. Basically, I'm questioning the need to rezone from public. I believe that office should be sufficient if we're just talking about a parking lot. I have, you know, the area is an established residential area, and it's been there even prior to the Stillwater built, the Medical Center even being built. So taking into consideration the age, the infrastructure structure is aging, the streets, the sewers, and everything else. So my concern would be the condition of that superstructure underneath with the possibility with this heavy equipment and everything, plus the demolition of the buildings that do exist on this property, considering the age of these homes. They no doubt have lead paint, and they have asbestos, you know, things like that which were common at the time that they were built. And I believe that that might be a health hazard for people, depending on how they demolish these places. You can't just go in, you know, if they have asbestos siding, you can't just bulldoze it. You have to take it off piece by piece because you don't want the fibers in the air. So that is a concern to me. And of course, what they do to the street. In my pictures, in the first group of pictures, it shows the cracking that's on Stanley Street and also on Gray Street already. They're sinking on Eighth Street. And they patched it several times, and it's right along the sewer line. So that would be a concern to me. And then my next concern would be the drainage issues. In the next group of pictures, it shows a lot of different things, different pictures, one of the hospital and different buildings at Women's Center. It says the hospital periodically discharges waste. They have some outlets underneath their hazardous waste trailer at the dock. And water comes down, travels all the way down Stanley Street in front of my house and leaves residue. So I'm a little bit concerned about that because with additional parking and additional water possibly going down the street, more of this stuff is moved. And they also have a trash compactor which leaves liquid waste that there's a, in the picture, you'll see a staining underneath that, and there's nothing that collects that. So when we're talking about building a parking lot, we're talking about increased surface water that could affect it. The, also the sprinkler systems. The sprinklers as they are right now from the hospital and the women's clinic go down, travel all the way down Stanley Street. And they also, Career Tech, they also go down Seventh, or Gray, from Seventh over Eighth and over to Stanley. So we have a lot of water that travels around this block area. And my concern is if you have additional water coming off of surface runoff off of a parking lot, that that could be an issue also. The other thing I want to mention is that I've looked at the parking lot that the Medical Center has, the Adams Street lot. And I looked at how they move the water in there for drainage. And they have a big collection basin, actually at the corner of that parking lot at Seventh and Adams. And then they have what they call, they're kind of like redirect areas where they cut out a curb. And then the water's meant to run into the grassy area. And normally it does when we have the heavy rains, it runs down there and into Seven. But the problem is all that water runs off, and it follows level. And the level is towards Stanley Street and Gray Street. And the same problem is there with Career Tech. Because the water comes off of theirs, and some of the pictures there shows a little bridge they actually put over one of the water diversion things. And that follows down, down Gray and down to Stanley. And then right in front of my house, it goes all the way down to Ninth Street. So when we have significant rainfall, this increases dramatically. And if we're adding a lot more surface water with this parking lot, I want to know, I'm concerned about how they're going to divert it. Because there's really only a couple of grades in their regular parking lot. And it appears that their normal way of handling this water would be through these little cutouts in the curbing. And that's not really a good idea when you're talking about all the residential area around me is all lower because the hospital sits up higher. It's all going to run down towards our home. And right now, there is a picture of the water going down my street. And when we had like three-quarter inch rain this last time, it was about two to three inches on both sides of the curb. But if we have a heavier storm, it goes, it goes the whole depth of the curb, curb to curb. So that is without the additional parking lot. And we get that much volume because both the Women's Center and the Medical Center all divert their water out to Seventh or to Gray. So this is, these are concerns for me. The other thing would be the, the, I'm getting ahead of myself in my notes here. The Women's Center right now diverts some of their parking lot water into the center of the one lot at the corner near their picnic table. And that goes down into the backyards of all those houses that are on Eighth Street. Now, the water, the water level is apparently high on that block. Now, this is right across the street from me. Because the neighbor that was across the street from me put French drains in, one on Eighth Street and one on Stanley Street. And that was to help get the water out from the back of his house. And he still had flooding. So that, between that and what already the Women's Center is directing from their parking lot into that lot, my concern is, okay, where are they going to put all this water? If you've got it coming off of the Women's Center, you've got it coming out of the parking lot, you've got, you know, you've got a natural lowness, are they going to raise that parking level up to such an elevation that it's going to be a lot higher than the rest of us on the street? Which could cause problems because I have a basement and other people do. If the storm water already can get as high as the curb, then it's not much more. It'll be going in my garage and everything else. So these are some of the things that I was concerned about. And the traffic. We already have 18-wheelers that go back and forth down Stanley Street because they pull up to the Stillwater Medical Center because a loading dock is, you know, if I look north from my house, there's a loading dock. And they pull down my street. And if we're talking about maybe even more equipment like that going, traversing that, because sometimes the Medical Center does park trailers and equipment in their parking lots, that would be a concern, too. You know, how much more traffic. And if it was put in a public use, like I mentioned in my letter, what about when they want to have the food trucks? And they do, you know, they have a carnival type, they have a lot of different events that they hold in their parking lots. So with an office classification, they wouldn't necessarily be automatically allowed to do that. Whereas with a public, yes, they could. So that would be a concern. I'm also concerned about the water pressure. Because we are at kind of the end of the water matrix in my area. Our water pressure is not high. I was told that by the Water Department when they replaced our water lines. They said, "Our pressure is not that great because we're right, we're kind of at the end of the spigot." So if the, if they develop this, first a parking lot and maybe something else, is that going to affect the water pressure in my neighborhood? You know, are they going to pull off a different line? Or are they going to connect to the line that we're on? So that would be a concern for me, too. The other thing would be, I, I don't like the idea that some of the issues with the, you might say, the area, the hospital has not been a great neighbor to us. And I say that, you know, they're improving the medical care in the, in the community. But living in the area, because we're behind the hospital, we've been exposed to a lot of different things, between medical waste sometimes, it's, you know, dropped or, how should I say, discarded, that we have to deal with. We also, this predominantly has happened around the Women's Center. When I walk my dog, I find this stuff that is, you know, on the ground, and then it blows around until somebody picks it up. And I don't, I think that's a health issue. And plus, they do, the people, since the hospital adopted and no smoking rule, people from the hospital frequently come down to my neighborhood because we have shady trees. And they sit there and they smoke, and they leave their butts, they leave their cups and their trash on the street. Now, if we create a parking lot, are we contributing to making it easier for them to do that? I don't, I don't know, you know, how the Medical Center looks at that? Whether or not that is considered, would be considered their grounds, that the people would have to go another block over to do that? Or if they will allow them to do that? So that's another issue that I have. So, and then the other issue with being a good neighbor is the fact that, you know, they have bought up a lot of homes between Adams and Gray. And we have had issues with not only the renters, but the way the hospital has maintained them. The last two pictures, one of them in particular, the house, the roof is falling apart. And the two pictures of the houses that I presented to you, that is the nicest those houses have ever looked, since I've been there for 16 years. Because there's no disabled vehicles in the front yard, there's no construction stuff, there's no trash. So it's, we want to be good neighbors, but we also want them to consider us because we are a residential area. And the college students that we do get in the area, they like it because it is quiet and that it's predominantly pretty safe. And I just, I am concerned with the health issues with the drainage and the possibility that there could be more problems in the future with the storm damage.
Have you met with the hospital?
No.
Have you voiced your concerns to the hospital?
No, I thought that was my platform here was to, to, well, I have talked about the renters and things, yes, I have talked to their agent. So they are, they are aware, I'm the one that calls the gal to save. And she said to call her, and I do. But then again, she tells me, "Well, you've got to call the city." You know, if the car's not to save, we have to call the city. You know, they're not cutting the grass, call the city. You know, and then the city says, "Well, we'll leave you a mortgage."
That's true.
But it's a problem.
Thank you for all of the information. And I think that we can pass this on to the hospital?
Yeah, well, and the pictures there, picture's worth a thousand words. And I may not see it the way I wanted to see it, but it gives you an idea of what we're dealing with.
Okay, well, we appreciate. I'm very sorry that the last time...
Well, no, that was my fault because I didn't understand the procedure, so it's okay.
Anyway, I'm glad that you could come and voice your opinion.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you offering.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the information. Okay, that takes us to items removed from the consent docket. And we removed item I. Counselor Zanotti?
We did. I didn't mean to cause concern. I think when someone turns in a quarterly report, I want to be able to say thank you for taking the time to do such a great report and to welcome Amy on board as the director and to thank Roger Moore for the last year of leadership. The Sherar Museum is kind of a little gem that we tend to not tout about and the fact that it has a lot of wonderful resources. And so I just want to say a couple of things that stood out with me in the quarterly report, if you guys will, that in the 23 days in April, they had over 1,500 visitors. There was 1,258 attended events in that auditorium. So the Sherar Museum has a lot going on. And I also want to say that in July, I guess this month, they're doing the Cool Classic Summer Concert Series, performances on Fridays beginning July 7th and continuing through July 28th. They're at 7:30 PM and free to the public. And thanks to the funding from the Oklahoma Arts Council and its generous grant. I know that they're also getting ready for this fall to do a museum center gallery entitled How Dry Was It?, The Prohibition in Stillwater. Not to say that that's a special interest of mine, but I will. And so I just, I just want to say a shout out and thank you for the quarterly report on this. I'm proud to say that that's part of our community. And when you spend the time doing a quarterly report, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zanotti. Well said, and I think we can all agree on that. Thank you. Okay, so are we going to approve item I?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt item I for the consent docket. Please vote. And it is approved with a vote of four to zero. That brings us to public hearings. Item A is received public input regarding a request to close 20-foot utility easement on property addressed at 1402 North Hightower Street. The item is CC-17-106. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this? Mr. McNichol?
Paula Dennison with Development Services will write that report.
Good evening. What we have before you this evening is a closing request for a utility easement. Bring up the map. What you see hatched and outlined in purple on the screen is the easement. It is a 20-foot utility easement that was platted as part of the subdivision many, many years ago for the purpose of extension of utilities that were necessary for the further development of the lots as part of that subdivision plat. However, they found other ways to get the utilities in, and there are no utilities in this utility easement. This is an aerial view of it. You can see the house, there's a house on the adjacent lot. The subdivision to the south is developing. And currently, there is a house being built on this lot that is affected. They did not want to wait and see the outcome of this closing request, so they adjusted the house north on the property so they could already be under construction while the closing request was going forward. And again, there are no utilities in this easement. Be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Counselors, questions? Okay, and we don't have anyone to speak at this public hearing, so I will open it and I will close it and ask for the recommendation.
Yes, staff did evaluate it, and we recommend approval of the closing request.
All right, councilors, if you don't have any questions, is there a motion?
Motion to accept the staff recommendation to approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept staff's request to approve CC-17-106. Please vote. And with a vote of four to zero, that is approved. We have two more items that are postponed, and I just, either Mr. McNichol or Mr. Dorman, would you just explain, just so we know?
Sure, we're working on both items. Item B, we want to make some further revisions to that item, and it's going to make that trip back through the Land Development Committee and possibly see the Planning Commission again. We have, however, asked you to postpone that one to the 21st of August. The other item, item C, excuse me, I have it backwards. Item C is the plating item. Item B is the water item. We are working on finding the right place to insert that requirement. And also, we're trying to reconcile a regulatory dispute between two state agencies as to which provision applies. And that is going to take a little bit of time. We have OBEQ rules and we have Building Code Commission rules, and they're not consistent with one another. So once we figure out how to resolve that, then we will have that item back. So we've asked that you postpone it to the 21st of August as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to general orders. Oh. Okay, let's, do we have a motion to move items B and C to August 21st?
I'll make the motion to move them to later meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move them to August 21st. Please vote. And with a vote of four to zero, it is approved that they are moved to August 21st. Okay, now, general orders, discuss, Mr. McNichol. The discussion and possible action regarding the proposed Block 34 conceptual plan, including but not limited to a vote to adopt the plan in consideration of the creation of the implementation task force.
Following the last meeting, there, we listened closely to the discussion that the council held and tried to formulate a resolution that would be acceptable. And what you have before you, and John can weigh in here, because we have, Mr. Dorman and I have been working closely together on this. You can change any of it. We just tried to get a reading of the entire council and present a conceptual plan that, or a resolution that you can take a look at and pick the pieces that were accepted in its entirety, anything in between. So the idea was to give the council the ability to discuss the whole Block 34 issue and determine if that resolution or as modified by the council here tonight would be acceptable.
Okay, so first of all, we appreciate that you've put this together. And I think that, well, I'll just ask council, councilors for...
Well, and I will tell you that Mr. Dorman has come prepared with a memory stick and can actually put the resolution up on the screen and make changes as we go.
So we can do it tonight? We appreciate that. So let's discuss for a minute. Counselors, discussion.
Are we, we're discussing item A under number eight, which is general orders and resolution at the same time?
Well, those are two separate items, right?
They're separate items, but they're related, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
The way I put the agenda together, I anticipated that you would take a vote on whether to adopt the conceptual plans. And if so, then the next item in business would be to look at the resolution and if that's where you wanted to go, or if that area you wanted of that, then that would be a separate vote. So we're anticipating two actions.
So how about, let's discuss the conceptual plan first. Is that okay? All right, so discussion.
I don't understand that at all. I don't understand what that means, the conceptual plan as drawn.
It is my understanding from discussions with various councilors over the past month that there is an interest in adopting the concept of what was proposed by the Sparks drawings. And in that context, then allowing a committee to go forward with that and make recommendations with regard to whether it's feasible, whether there are things that need to be changed, added to, taken from, modified... to be changed, added to, taken from, modified, whatever, but to try to get, to get this process moving because there seemed to be a lot of interest in having someplace to start. And what I understood was that the plan was kind of where people were interested, and this is a jumping off place, so to speak.
And I do think that, I guess it's how you define conceptual, but I think after reading the resolution, it feels to me, to me like you are, we are giving the ad hoc committee latitude, a lot of latitude. Maybe they don't, maybe they decide that they think we need more hospitality area, or maybe more retail area, or more green space, whatever they would decide. They have the latitude to do that. So, it's just the concept. We're not adopting the exact, I'm asking.
Yes.
We're not going to adopt the exact plans that we saw. This is just a place to start for the committee.
The use of the word "concept" was intentional in the sense that it's not, this is not carved into stone by me. This is a place to start and see if this works, if this goes. And that was what my understanding was, just based in various conversations that I've had. So, that's kind of in with Norman, because we kicked this around quite a bit, as he's pointed out. And so, we're trying to get you someplace to, someplace to work from.
There was originally a list of amenities that the council was interested in seeing, and any of those could be removed, replaced with something else, moved around in the plan, or the council could direct that we've had time to think about it, and those amenities are not what we wanted, so.
And I think, I've been on the council now two years, and I know we've talked about this for two years. And although I have appreciated, and I think the community has appreciated us taking our time and thinking about what could or could not go on there, I think we've reached a point where I think we need to start the process because you can theorize and think about things, and you're always going to come up with something that may or may not have that happen. And so, for me, this is a great starting point. I think we all are in pretty much general agreement about what we'd like to see on Block 34. We'd like to see it be something that's going to generate interest and perhaps generate some sales tax, and that we've got to start it. And I think putting some things in place, I think if anyone has ever built anything or done anything, you start off with a plan, but as it starts, what's great in theory, once you start doing it in reality, it's going to change and switch. And so, for me, this allows us a chance to start it, and I think it allows people to be involved and make decisions and have more expertise than I do, or we do, to move things forward. And so, I think it's time, and I think we're ready, and I think we've got people that are, that are interested in doing it. So, I'm, I'm excited that we are discussing this again and having the possibility to move forward. It's daunting to think about something that is going to affect an entire community. And even though it seems like it's taken a long time to get to this point, I'm confident that we're going to move forward and make this a really great continuation of what's already happening in downtown Stillwater and hopefully what will spread out to the entire community of Stillwater.
I think you said something important about the expertise of whom we select to put on the ad hoc committee. I think that's very important because nobody up here has all of that expertise, but there's a lot of people in the community. So, based on what I read, we're each going to nominate three people for the committee, and then on the 21st, I will nominate people, and the council will approve. Is that what everybody understands and agrees with?
You'll through a series of, yeah, however many votes it takes to pick a committee.
Okay, okay. So, I haven't even looked your way. Counselor Wedlake.
I think you guys have said it well. I think I've made my opinion very clear in the past that, that I agree. It's a daunting thing to think about doing something that affects an entire community and beyond that, possibly even generations of an entire community. That, that plan needs to be set forth, however. We need to, we need to make a move on this thing. And like you said, Counselor Zanotti, I absolutely agree that as soon as you get started, the best-laid battle plans go out the window, as far as, as soon as the first shot is fired, as the saying goes. But nonetheless, we need to, we need to have a starting point. And I think, I think providing an ad hoc committee or a citizens' task force, whatever you want to call it, is a good jump, you know, into that, into that direction of just getting things rolling. So, like I said, above all else, you can't be afraid to make a mistake either. We're going to make mistakes along the way. I guarantee it. But we will at least be on that journey, as opposed to sitting here 10 years from now thinking, what are we going to do with Block 34? And, you know, that's kind of how I feel on deal. So, I, you know, I'm ready to get started. I think we've got the best-laid plans in place, and I think that a citizens' task force is, is a good way to go. We, we need to provide that task force with a concept, however, with some direction. And I think that, hopefully, that's what we'll do here tonight.
I agree, yes.
I agree with some of what you've said and some, and I disagree with some other things. I'm not certain that we're all completely sure about what we're doing and what we agree on. I want to make sure that I do see in writing the, what concepts means, and that it does not mean necessarily the plan, but it means the amenities, as I'm understanding, that we've listed, and that the committee, the task force, has a great deal of latitude to rearrange that, asking for input from any person outside of their task force that they would like to. I do think that we kind of, we might have freaked ourselves out with this whole Block 34. Every decision we make up here affects the whole city, perhaps for many years and decades. So, every decision is, is a thoughtful one, and this is not actually a starting point because we started a long time ago. And I don't apologize at all for the time that we've taken to examine all of the issues related to this, and there is no rush to do, to just do something. It has to be, it really needs to be done well. I'm very excited to turn this over to a task force of citizens who are, have other expertise than we do. And I think that's a nice point along our ongoing progress toward Block 34. But I do want to know exactly what concepts we are agreeing to.
I suggest that we are agreeing to the suggested amenities that were maybe on the plan, but not limited to, and I, I, your wording will be better than mine, Mr. Dorman?
My understanding was it was the Sparks plan that was produced here in the last month or so and discussed by the council. Was the concept, was the concept that was to become the starting point for the discussion.
Concept that can be altered?
Absolutely. There's nothing in here that sets this in stone. Even after the task force comes back, if you don't like the task force recommendation, you are absolutely 100% free to do whatever else you want to do.
So.
It's, this is a, very much a very open process.
Can you amend the resolution tonight to, to say something about?
You want to name the specific, I used the word "adopted conceptual plan" because I was working under the impression that was the Sparks plan was what everyone was talking about, but I can be more specific as to that.
Can I, can I jump in and say, is it, what we're looking at for this Block 34 is a mixed use. It's not one simple thing that's going on this block. It's a mixed use. And so, as we're thinking about that, mixed use hospitality, retail, green space, I mean, is there a wording that, I mean, is that what we're, I mean, you're saying that we're, we're wanting to have that block have a mixed use, and depending on where it goes or what it is, is not necessarily where we're at at this point, but we're wanting to have that defined by this task force to say, does it make sense to have this much retail, this much hospitality, this much green space? Does, I mean, is mixed use the word?
Well, it's, yes, the fact the concept that was produced by the Sparks group was a mixed use.
Right, and is that what you're kind of?
Well, if you're looking, I mean, if you're wanting to pin it down a little bit to start with, then what I would recommend that in the first sentence after the word "adopted a conceptual plan," I would, I would qualify that with prepared by either the Sparks and Associates, or does somebody have a copy of that plan with them? Because obviously, I didn't bring one in here with me.
Or, in the alternative, John, we could list just the amenities.
Well, that's kind of what I was thinking. Can we not just list the amenities that are on that piece of paper right there, John?
Although, would that limit us?
Well, I think we have to say to add or delete, or to the discretion of the committee.
That was the idea, is that you handed them and say, this is what we're talking about, something along these lines. Tell us, does this work? Is this what you think the community wants? Is this, is this financially feasible? You know, are there other things that we need to be doing here? Do we need to add? Do we need to delete? This, this thing gives them absolute control over that.
Right.
It's very open-ended in the way it's written. But handing them a picture is probably, this is the closest you've gotten to actual, any kind of cohesive plan.
And I, I think that's fine to put forward, just as long as we all understand that the committee makes the decisions, plans, and will come back to us, but that they can add, they can delete, they can make recommendations, that it's just the starting point. The Sparks just kind of put everything in the same, on the same page.
Well, I would literally just plug that thing in right here, right after, right before the word, right after the word "plan," "a conceptual and prepared by," and then Sparks, Reed, Associates, so that it's clear as to which one you have adopted, and the rest of it flows from there.
And the committee's going to get very specific instructions. Once the committee is selected, they will sit down with us.
The idea was to have a joint meeting with the council and the committee and have a very open and frank discussion about what it is, that the expectations are, so for them to ask you questions so that they, they walk out knowing exactly what you're looking for. And, you know, the council might take a vote on two or three things at that meeting and say, here's the, here's your work list here. Here's what we're thinking. And so that they have clear guidance. And at that point, let them go to work.
Absolutely.
I agree that the task force, I wouldn't even want to be on a task force if I didn't have some confidence that what I was going to put my energy into was going to actually come to some fruition. So, I hope that we can give that task force that confidence. I do, I'm, I just want to make sure in the resolution that it's very clear that the latitude that the task force has. And number one, under be it further resolved in the resolution, is develop a final site plan consistent with the Block 34 conceptual plan. What would be inconsistent? I mean, could it be inconsistent?
Well, if they come back with a completely different plan, then probably they haven't followed the charge that you gave them. Because it's my understanding, again, based on what I have heard over the last 30 days or so, is that this is kind of where we want to start, that there's a lot of interest in this, that even prior discussions prior to the production of this, these entities were kind of listed. In fact, these are the basis for where the majority of the council wanted to go. So, of course, they could, if, if you're going to adopt the plan, then you would want them to develop something consistent with it. If they can't, then they could come back and tell you, we think this plan's garbage, and you should try something else. But do you, it's up to you whether you want to give them that kind of, if you want to allow them to just completely redesign with that. I'll put in here whatever you want. Whatever the majority of the council says is good, that's what we'll do.
Well, like I said, not to take two steps back, but we've had this discussion already. We've had several meetings discussing what the council wants on this block and what we think that the citizens would most benefit from. So, as far as a concept, you know, I, one of the things, maybe I should clarify my statement two weeks ago, but one of the things I liked about Mr. Sparks's plan was that it encompassed all of the things that we as a council agreed should be implemented into Block 34. It may not be the layout we like. It may not be, you know, the building facades may not be what we like, but these are all things that we can discuss as we're getting, as we're developing this block. Right now, what we need to do is just decide what do we see Block 34 becoming? And I think we've, we've all agreed that the amenities that were in Mr. Sparks's plan was, were consistent with, with what we had discussed in the past. And so, I think that's the direction that the task force needs to take. Say, this is Mr. Sparks's plan. These are the amenities we want to see on here. That's it. Go nuts. Locations, building facades, whatever, that's at the latitude of the ad hoc committee.
I agree.
Well, I am in the minority, and I know that. There are other things that I would like to see on Block 34, and there are some things that I would not like to see on Block 34, but I don't want to stand in the way of getting this task force going.
Let's go ahead and take a vote tonight on the task force, on the creation of the task force, correct?
You actually, you've got two items.
Okay.
Yeah.
First would be whether you want to adopt the Sparks, Reed, Associates concept.
Okay.
I will.
Is there a motion?
I will make that motion to adopt Sparks's concept.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the Sparks concept. Please vote. And with a vote of four to zero, the Sparks concept is adopted. The second part of the vote would be the resolution.
Yes.
For the ad hoc.
For the ad hoc, and then if you want the amendment that I've recommended, then we would want to.
Yes.
Add that in. Give me to.
Yes.
Formulate the motion.
Yes.
Except.
Listen carefully.
Where in here does it say that the task force has complete latitude?
It doesn't. It doesn't says it has, it doesn't say it has complete latitude as to what the project is to be. It is to take the concept that you just voted to adopt and try to make it work. And if not, then.
But they do have latitude to be able to make changes. What we want is the, the amenities that were described, not maybe the way they look.
Well, and they use the word "consistent," again, consistent with the plan. It doesn't have to be, I mean, we could, we can make it softer than consistent. You could say
Similar.
Similar or agree.
Similar.
Similar, well, similar is probably narrower.
It's the same, yeah.
I was thinking in the spirit of, or following the.
In the spirit of?
I hate that. I've gotten beat up with that.
Well, is there, is there a part, I mean, I think we're wanting them to start with, with something, and so that's why we're having them with Sparks. Is there something that if they get to this plan and it just is not what's going to work, I think that's what you're trying to say somewhat, that if it truly is, they come back to us and say, no, is there something in here that allows them to be able to, to bring that up to us and say, you know what, we're just not, this is the way you, this isn't going to work?
Then let's put, I'll tell you what this is. We're under three. We'll make a new four here, and we will say, should the task force find that the concept is unworkable, then to report that and any other recommendation to the city council.
With other recommendations, too.
And I'd just like to point out that you're going to have the opportunity to sit with whoever is selected and say, we don't want another splash pad. That, that was not one of the items that was on the original list of amenities. Or, and I think that you can emphasize at that time that.
More retail, maybe, or that's what I was thinking.
You can put more retail, you can move things around, you can change, that you can close Duncan Street, all those things that, that have been talked about. And I think you've made a pretty clear public record tonight.
Mm-hmm.
That the idea is that.
I'm trying to finish this sentence.
Sorry.
I'm having a mental block. And if they make any recommendations, it's just there with it. All right, so this is what I would, so, well, number, so as number four here, you've listed three duties, and then four, should the task force find that the concept is unworkable, to report such finding. to report such finding, I should say, to the city council. And to make any other recommendation consistent therewith. Is that, are you comfortable with that?
It's kind of lurid.
Well, it's, I've got, I can kind of minimize the "we"字 words.
Okay. You go from "in the spirit of" to "consistent therewith."
Yeah.
There we are.
There with.
People don't think they get their money worth if you don't use enough of those words.
He's a comedian, too.
Okay, so we have to have two amendments then.
Okay.
So if you're ready for a motion, then I would help you with that.
Yes, okay.
To adopt resolution CC 201711 as presented with the following amendments. And with regard to the first full paragraph after the word, words "conceptual plan," insert the words "prepared by Sparks Reed Associates." And then five is the next amendment, remember those. Paragraph six, add new item four to read as follows. Should the task force find that the concept is unworkable, to report such finding to the city council and make any other recommendation consistent therewith. Period.
Okay, someone want to say what John said?
I move to approve the amended resolution as read by John Doran.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for the resolution, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the resolution is approved. Progress. Okay, ordinances, Mr. Doran, second reading.
Would be ordinance number 3372, the ordinance residing tract of land addressed at 1411 West 7th Avenue, 1404 to 1424 West 8th Avenue, 712 to 720 South Stanley Street, and 707 to 715 South Gray Street from Ford Office and RSS Residential Small Lot Single Family to P. Public District. This is the item the speaker mentioned earlier in the meeting.
Discussion.
I voted no on this, first, on the first reading, and I appreciate the work that the speaker did on this. I also, just, I spoke to the engineer after the vote. I would prefer parking area, if it is going to be a parking lot, be under buildings rather than just taking residential area for parking. So just a philosophical point.
To all the other, well, there were several that she talked about. Do we need to present this to the hospital first, before we vote on this?
It's kind of up to you, if you adopt it tonight, if you have this tonight, then you're on the 30-day clock. If you want to postpone consideration of it, and maybe take these items up with the hospital first, you could postpone the second reading to the August 21st meeting.
I, I think I would like to do that. I, I think the concerns were well thought out. Pictures say a lot. I think it warrants having a conversation with the hospital to see what, what could, could or could not happen. And I'll feel more comfortable making a decision based on that than moving forward with that tonight.
I agree.
I concur.
Okay, so.
We don't need a motion on this, we'll just, say, Van Jaren, I know, put it back on the 21st agenda.
I'm sorry, which date?
August 21st.
Okay.
You're really loading up that August 21st agenda. Okay, I'm just, just, well, I'm not teasing, but it's okay. Okay, so reports from officers and boards. Mr. Doran.
Three items, request executive session pursuant to 250 S of section 307v3, and with the purpose of reverting on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within the city of Stillwater because public exposure of the matter to be discussed would interfere with the development of products and services and violate confidentiality of the business. Second, request an executive session pursuant to 250 S of section 307v3, for the purpose of confidential communication regarding purchase or appraisal of the property. Third, request an executive session pursuant to 250 S of section 307v4, for the purpose of confidential communication regarding pending litigation costs various industries versus Stillwater Utilities Authority, case number CIB 1737HE, United States District 4, Western District of Oklahoma. It's my opinion that public exposure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the city council to finish this pending litigation in public interest. And that's all I have tonight, ma'am.
Thank you. City manager.
Thank you, mayor, I have two items. One, I'd like to express my gratitude to all city staff members, volunteers, and contributors, and attendees who helped make this year's Chickasaw Boomer Blast a success. Also want to thank everyone for their patience and understanding, and the fact that we had to postpone that. The show was postponed on its original date, as well as the makeup. Because of the about four inches of rain we had the day before made the parks grass too soft to park the anticipated 2,000 vehicles.
There were at least 2,000 vehicles out there.
There were at least, yeah.
Next week, so I, I second that. The staff did a great job. That was, it was a lot of fun.
And we could have asked for a better evening, it was not 110, it was great.
It was great, it was like being able to celebrate twice.
I have a couple of other items. I would like to compliment both the electric distribution folks and the water distribution folks. We had a significant outage. Took them 40 minutes to reroute from a main transformer, and I probably called it the wrong thing. Bus transformer, I don't know. Anyway, they had to reroute all of that to get the power back on, and I think they've got that transformer repaired.
No, we're still, still.
Still down, okay. And I know 40 minutes is a long time, 4,300 customers out of service. And we really appreciate the fact that they were able to make that reroute. And one you probably don't even have the slightest idea about, unless you looked at the city's website, is that Saturday we had a major transmission, water transmission line that serves, of course, the Southwest Pressure Zone, that developed a significant leak. And I found it kind of suspicious. It was after, the day after we had six earthquakes. But significantly, and once again, they were able to isolate that leak. A new pump station had just been worked on by a contractor and gotten to the stage where they could actually operate it manually, because most of those work on pressure switches. And they figured out how, kind of like the electricity, how to reroute that water, use that new pump station, and actually had someone stand there and kick this pump on and off, and keep the towers full. And that I know of, we had little, if any, complaints over that whole break. But that was a pretty significant deal figuring out how to reroute that water, so. Both instances, I'd really like to congratulate our employees. They work in, they work on weekends, they work out in this heat, they, it's.
Absolutely.
And, and again, you would have never known about the second incident.
And I, I believe I heard a rumor that you were at your house turning on and off your water to see if there was.
To see if there was, yes.
Any change in pressure, and you couldn't even.
I couldn't tell. Couldn't tell at all.
They did a great job, and.
We appreciate all city employees. There's, there were a myriad of people out there backhoes, and, you know, it was a big deal.
I know the citizens appreciate that, because what could have been, it could have been a much longer time.
It could have.
Anyway, I found it quite suspicious too, about what you said, so. Okay, councilors, any news?
Speaking of water, the Water Department has been repairing and replacing nearly 50 manhole frames and lids in high-traffic areas across town this summer. If you haven't noticed the disruption of traffic, you haven't been here. The repairs are being made to improve the driving surface of the roadways, including areas along 6th Avenue and Perkins Road. Project will be complete by the end of this month, with only.